The.
Come.
Ringo don't want to take ownership and that would be the simplest thing.
Right.
You know, but they would, they refuse to take ownership.
Gordon Township? Yeah. Yeah. Br- Brango and Gordon.
Yeah, well.
Sorry Jake, we had technical difficulties.
No worries, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Okay, sorry about that, I thought it was on my end.
This is Mike Stark, I've got a question. I thought that this was already approved and the reason we're going through it again is because there wasn't the appropriate notification given to people for, for public hearings.
Uh, that's.
That was the first item on the agenda, the public hearing that was in regards to the Slough Horse Dam and the other dams where we're talking about the Hudson Bay Dam.
Okay.
Two separate.
Sorry.
So as I said, I forward Jake's documents to council to review to ensure that they agree with the DNR's position. Um, I expect to hear back from them on, well, I guess when they have the opportunity, which would be a week or two. I did find out that there, first of all, there is a conflict in the statutes between section thirty-one point three-eight, which says you can tax for a dam. Sixty-six point oh, what? Specifically defines municipality as sixty-six point oh seven. Specifically defines municipality as a city, village, or town. I know Mitch County. So, um, so that created a conflict. I did speak to, again, council and they're generally of the opinion that we can special assess. Um, that opinion was forwarded to the Department of Revenue for comment. So as of now, yes, we can, but the DOR may come back and say, no. So. Kind of where we are.
One comment I'd like to make on that, if I, if I could, is that there is another county that owns the dam. Washburn County has special assess for dam repairs in the past, so. Unless they did it incorrectly, I believe it can be done, but I'd be interested to hear what Department of Revenue comes back with as well.
Right, and that just comes down to how they interpret the statutes. So. I expect to hear something from them in the near future, too.
We'll just put this on the agenda for next month?
Yeah, it will be on the next meeting. Yeah. This is a discussion only at, item. So I did, everybody did get a copy of the documents the DNR sent us, so you can review those and make sure you agree or disagree.
And I've, this is Mike again, I've got one more question. Is it our responsibility to recommend to the county board what to do? We don't make the final decision, do we?
Um, yeah, at, at some point, it will be the, the committee will make a recommendation to the board. Um, if it's, if the decision by this committee is that the county owns the dam and will special assess to fix it, then the county board will have to take that up during budget season. Um, if this committee decides that we don't own the dam and says that they should really do a lake district, then the county board will still have to agree with that.
What, what if the, they don't do a lake district?
Well, that's where the conundrum is right now.
Right, right.
So. I will, I, I will say though, just for the record, that I know Ken, you have a different opinion and that's, we do, and that's fine, and that's great. Um, everybody's allowed to have different opinions. I do think for the residents, a lake district is probably a better option because they do get to control how, when spending occurs, repair occurs, how long, over what time period it's gonna happen. Whereas if the county does it, we're liable to do the whole project at once and special assess a much larger amount right away. So I, so, and we will, it'll encompass everybody who has any access to it. So it, there is a, there is a benefit in that they can, Lake District, they can control the, the rate of spending. Whereas if the county specials assess, they have no control. So that's just something to consider.
Any other questions?
Just for the record, our, some, but if you don't know how big our lake is, or our two lakes are very small lakes and, um, we're not looking to control all the things that they do in the Lake District. All we want to make sure is that our dam remains in place so that our lake stays there and Mukwa Lake stays there. We do not want to, you know, start administering speed limits and all the other stuff that, that, you know, Lake District has in its, uh, in its repertoire. So we want to keep it as simple as possible. As, as the fellow from Wisconsin said, there's, there's gonna be a problem trying to get enough people here to, to be on a board and every year have, you know, have five or three people on the board, plus having a, an audited budget. Uh, we're just not that big of an operation. All we want to do is maintain that dam, period. Thanks.
One final thing, I did talk to our highway commissioner and he, he need, we would need a easement of forty feet at least to get to that dam. And that's so heavy machinery can get back there and work on it. Uh, cause you need, you need to get concrete machines back there, you need to get diggers and all that stuff. You need to be able to do that if you're gonna maintain that. So we would need a minimum of forty foot easement. Should heavy equipment go out there, it's gonna be necessary to clear and grub all that property, too. So, and that would be part of a special assessment then.
One, one other thing, we have, we have a different means to, uh, to change stop logs so that you wouldn't necessarily have to get a lot of heavy equipment in there. And, um, I mean, I'd be able to go over this with you or with whoever is involved with this, but, uh, uh, I know that you need a minimum of forty feet to get heavy equipment in, but we're not planning to have any big ramps or anything like that or big equipment out there necessarily. We're gonna do this a different way. We're gonna do this off the water, so.
If, then, if you guys are gonna do everything, why don't you just form a district and do it? What, what, why do you want the county? Cause if the county owns it and we have to get in there with heavy equipment, if it's, it's a major failure, I don't know.
You don't necessarily, not if, not if we work together on it.
Oh, well, if the county does it, we're gonna have to bid it out per state statute and the contractor's gonna do it the most efficient way possible. Which means that they're probably gonna want a road to get, get their equipment to the dam. So we would actually need a, a minimum forty feet wide easement. Again, that land would have to be cleared and grubbed so it can, so you can get a road back there so equipment can go back there. So, um, that's something we need to talk to the Yoltos about, too.
Okay, anymore on this subject? Anymore on the subject? Okay, thank you for attending and we'll move on. Next item is permits issued revenue account.
All right, first off, has everybody met Bruce Blakeman?
No.
Okay, Bruce, why don't you introduce yourself before you start on this topic?
I'm, I'm Bruce here and, uh, I got put on here a couple, about two months ago to fill in for the zoning position that was open. So I'm pretty new to this, but, uh, yeah, um, it's been going good so far and um, I'm willing to learn whatever needs to be learned here.
All right, and I guess I will speak on behalf of the issued permits in our revenue account. Um, I have included all the months since our last meeting. Um, back in March, we brought in two thousand eight hundred and eighty dollars. April, we brought in a total of eight thousand six hundred and ten dollars. And then, um, some transfers to make a grand total permits issued for nine thousand six hundred and sixty dollars. And then going into last month of May, the total fees for permits issued was eight thousand one hundred fifty-five dollars with a total transferred four thousand two hundred dollars for a total of twelve thousand three hundred fifty-five dollars. Does anybody have any questions in regards to my spreadsheet?
No.
Okay.
Do we need to approve these through motion? Yeah, I make motion that we accept the report.
This is Mike Stark, I second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Or she carried? Okay, the next item on there will be discussion possible action on Ashland County permit fees. We're just giving an updated one.
So I have attached the fees in regards to Bayfield County versus Ashland County. And then we, prior to the meeting, I had hung out, handed out, um, uh, comparison worksheet to show you the differences between Ashland County and Bayfield County fees. And, um, I think we were just looking to have a discussion. Um, it's been since twenty eighteen since the permit fees have been looked at. And so with the price of inflation and everything, um, I was asked to bring it forth to the committee.
So, we've kind of been going through this stuff, looking, I don't know how often you guys update this stuff as far as the fees.
About every year or two, depends on where, what, what our administrator thinks that, uh, they're, uh, needing more.
Okay. So just for kind of what I, I got out of this, we're not too far off on most of the fees, but probably the most important one is the building fee. And if you can see on the very top one for Bayfield County, they charge by, you can see zero, zero to fifty thousand of the value, fair market value, is a hundred twenty-five dollar building fee. And then it, from fifty thousand to a hundred, it goes up to two hundred fifty dollar fee. And here's where the big difference comes, anything over a hundred thousand dollar home or building, it's three dollars per thousand. So on, if an average home would cost two hundred thousand to build, our fee would, going according to this, three dollars per thousand, that would be, our fee would be six hundred dollars. Which right now, we're charging three hundred dollars for a building.
We just got a flat rate of three hundred.
We have a flat rate.
Yeah.
So not that we have to, I'm really not pushing this at all, just, it's a, a point where it's probably a little more fair, cause the ones who are spending more money would pay more for the fee.
Right.
And it would bring more income to our county, no doubt.
Right.
Two hundred thousand might be a low figure for an average home, there probably more now, two fifty, three hundred, yeah. So it would be a fair amount of income, we'd be upping it if we did go that route. Otherwise, most of the other ones are kind, we're somewhat, we're low on some and a little higher than others, but that's, that was the biggest difference between us and Bayfield County.
Comment?
Yep.
Um, it seems like we've been going over these almost every year. And, uh, usually we get a five to ten county average. So you'll see, some of them will be way up on some things and way down, depending on, you take a Burnett County where they're like a Sawyer County, they got a lot of building, a lot of people coming in. My question would be, do we see a lot of two hundred, three hundred thousand dollar homes? I would assume most houses are two to three hundred thousand today versus thirty years ago, they were barely a hundred thousand. So that would, that would help us, uh, make some of that decision. If we looked at our um, population, we know that Bayfield County, uh, in the last ten years has surpassed Ashland County in population. They were always two to three thousand less, now there are more. That tells me one real big thing, their buildings are just, they're going crazy over there, they're building like, so you're on the ground now, are, are we getting a lot of these kind of buildings going up? Or more remodeling? What, what's, what's happening out there?
From what I can see, we get the occasional bigger, nicer home, and it's usually on the lakes and southern part of the county. But from what I've seen, and it's only been the last couple of months, of course, I've been here, but for the most part, it's more additions, um, not, not in these real big homes like Bayfield County, so it's not gonna be a huge difference.
So would we maybe want to just leave it lower to encourage people to come in so they don't? I mean, if you're building a three hundred thousand dollar house, six hundred dollars isn't really gonna matter to them in the big scheme of things, but maybe that'd be a little incentive to build it here, I don't know.
Well, that was kind of my point is the, the people that can afford a, a half a million to a million dollar home, they really ain't gonna care.
Six hundred dollars won't be, nothing.
The permit don't even, they don't even think twice for a permit.
No, that's true.
Where if, so this is for, for the, the average home, maybe under two thousand or two hundred or under.
Right.
For these smaller homes, then they're paying just a smaller fee, so it, it seems pretty fair.
Right, that's why they probably have a three dollars per hundred thousand. Then even a two hundred thousand won't affect them as bad as a half million dollars.
Yeah, exactly.
Well, we, we don't want to get into paying our levy money and that by charging people just for permits, you know? I think the zoning, uh, committee in the, or, or the department in the years that I've been here have gone from maybe ten percent of the, what the, what we use to more than what the department actually uses, so. I think our permit fees have been very much in line and I think they've been pretty, pretty reasonable for the most part. I don't have a problem going for, for what Bayfield County does, that, that wouldn't bother me a bit.
Right.
Now, were you talking just this one or overall, or how would you like to?
Well, I would say, my opinion, just this one, because if the rest were high and some and low on the other, it probably averages out. Rather than make a wholesale change and
Yeah.
affect everybody that's been getting permits and stuff.
I agree with that, too, yeah. Probably the main one is this building, building permit.
Can I make a comment?
Sure.
Hi, I'm Brittany Goodis Wisebicker, I'm the GIS coordinator for Ashland County. And within the last two or three years, I've started working on the addressing in Ashland County, so, um, one thing that has kind of shifted recently in the last couple of months is now highway zoning and the GIS department are all combined doing addressing. Um, and I know that this fee schedule has one line item for, uh, nine-one-one addressing. I'd like to see if this fee schedule gets updated, I'd like to see, um, three separate, uh, line items, one for a regular address application, one for a replacement sign application. Um, and we have one other application, I'm blanking on it right now. Creisha, do you know what that third one is? Oh yeah, the, the nine, non-taxable land application. Um, so I would like to see those added if this fee application, uh, fee schedule is updated. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Questions, do we want, are we gonna bring this to the full board then, or do we just, we can do it here, or?
Does the county board have to?
So the county board does have to, uh, anytime we work with money, have.
That's, that's the way I understood it, too. So you guys would have to give them a direction, what, what you think here?
Well, the committees, uh, submitted to the county board and then they make a decision if they should do that or not. But that, this is only one. How many of these do you think we should be changing?
Well, like we were talking there, I think the most important one is the building permit and now what she had just mentioned, them two probably for sure. I don't know, any of the others are out of line that much.
The reason I say that is, if you go to page three and we got a gazebo, four hundred dollars for a permit for a gazebo, you know, and I go, sometimes I wonder how we ever did some of these things, you know?
You know, exactly what you're saying.
Only get five gazebos a year, but to charge somebody five, four hundred dollars for a gazebo, just, this seems like.
Before lumber went crazy, that was probably the total cost of a gazebo, you know?
Well, uh, the point is, is if you got a three hundred thousand dollar home,
Yeah.
and it's gonna cost you six hundred bucks, where in a Dickens did we come up with four hundred dollars?
Okay, George, you've been here longest, so that's, you probably made that price. What was the reason?
Well, you know, this is why I ask you if, you know, is this, uh, building permit the only thing, because we get, we get these numbers from all kinds of different counties. And like I said, if you take us, uh, a, um, Sawyer County, a Burnett County, a Bayfield County, which are heavily in lakes and, and recreation and that, they're gonna be high. You know, but in Ashland County where, where, uh, struggling, we've been struggling forever and, and, and to be, continue to raise these. So maybe we need to go through all of them and, and maybe revise them, I don't know, maybe, have you looked through all of them?
We, we have been, uh, but I didn't know how much you guys wanted me to be involved if you wanted to do it, or if you want me to give you an idea of what we think they should be, come back to you at a different time?
I, I, I would do that, I, you, get you a little more, uh, formal with it, you know, like I said. Sometimes I don't know when we done these, but depend, you know, you got committees and people have different thoughts from years to years, you know? And, uh, I, I would, I would like you to go through all of them and see just exactly which ones you really think, or have you already done that?
Somewhat we have, like, uh, the camper one, there's not, nothing on here for a camper permit, where we see.
Recreational vehicle placement fee?
And that could be, I don't know.
It must be a camper.
Let's see where that one, and maybe that's what they intended for that, just, uh, we have a few of them that we're not sure what they were, if they have a specific, like some of the other zonings, they have a camper fee.
Okay, I would guess that.
And that wouldn't sound right, recreational.
Yeah.
I don't know how many different vehicles I was talking about, if we want to be that vague about it or not, um.
Right.
But we could, we could go through this for the next meeting, have something more where we.
Right, why don't we do that, then we can now, you know, do the same, I mean, if ours is three hundred and ours is seventy-five, it's, you know? Anyones that are high that we think, like you said, the gazebo fee is, I never looked at that till you said it, but that seems kind of high for a gazebo.
It looks like a lot of our fees, most of our fees are higher than Bayfield County, it's only the building fee that's more.
Right.
And yep, that's why I say that building one is probably the most important, just for the fact that the house, houses are
Yeah.
worth so much more.
Right.
Nowadays.
Yeah, why don't we do that?
Yeah, we can do that, we'll go through it and
Yeah.
give you a little more specific.
Right, we'll put this on an agenda for the next
Okay.
meeting to discuss further. Okay. Other business, any other business? Oh no, we got questions for a zoning agent and zoning committee.
Okay, is this, this is the next one on? Yeah, this is kind of the similar, but a little bit different. I wanted to run this past you, too. So right now in, in Ashland County, we don't require a soil test unless you want a sanitary system in the ground. Where Bayfield County requires a soil test, no matter what's, if you're gonna put a holding tank or any kind of a system, treatment system. Which in the, years ago, when I was, I started plumbing twenty-some years ago, everybody in Ashland County just figured they have poor soil, so they're just gonna put a holding tank. Okay. And that's just fine. But over them years, we've got a lot of mound systems going in Ashland County now.
Yeah.
And if we did change that to where everybody had to get a soil test before we issue a sanitary, there, a couple of things would come out of that. First of all, they would get educated, the homeowner would, that they could put a mound system, maybe not, maybe, maybe not, depending on the soil test. Um, the other thing is, if you require it, of course, you get another thirty dollar filing fee that would come to the county, which is not a lot of money, but so, on the, what Bayfield County has done, I've, I've done soil tests for years in Bayfield County. They have a waiver, and I made a copy of it here, I don't know if you guys have it in your packet, but they have a waiver that is for the soil tester, so if he goes out to the property and he can see that it's, the soil doesn't meet state requirements, COM eighty-three, he can fill out a waiver and charge the homeowner a lot less than what a full soil test would be. So it's, it's kind of a way to get the homeowner, don't get nailed so, so bad for a soil test that they, they may not have really needed, cause they couldn't get a system in anyway.
Do we got a ballpark with the soil test costs?
Soil tests range between five hundred and thousand dollars, depending on how far the guy travels to do them. And it's completely up to the soil tester, how much he charges, so that could be more or less, depending on who's doing it. And, and the waivers are, I've always done them for half price. Um, some of the soil testers don't charge anything. So that's just another thought here, if we wanted to do something like that, we would have to get authority to say that we have to, before we'll give out a sanitary permit, we do want a soil test or a waiver. Um, go ahead, George.
Yeah.
Uh, that brings up, uh, another can of worms. I was probably the most instrumental person in getting the mount, or while you can, anybody can put in a mound system, is, but they're gonna have to have a soil survey or test and everything else. Twenty, twenty years ago, around turn of the century, the state come out, what was called the Wisconsin Fund. Now, the Wisconsin Fund is a fund that if people cannot afford to redo their, you know, that they got a failing septic system, this Wisconsin Fund would come in and pay for their upgrade or their new system. Ashland County at that time, because we're on a clay plane and because ninety percent of our people have holding tanks, and, and I'll give you the, the, the thirty-second story, I did graves out at St. Anne's in Sandburn. It's all red clay and hard pan. We had to spend eight hundred dollars when we put in a new system and I just went, I'm, you gotta be kidding me, I'm telling you. Well, they went and took sur- survey, it cost eight hundred dollars and we put in holding tanks, I mean, you know? So we went as a committee and said, we're not gonna go to the Wisconsin Fund, cause if you go to the Wisconsin Fund, you have to take, uh, like Bayfield, well, I think there's only four counties in the state that haven't gone to the Wisconsin Fund. But then you gotta have, everybody's gotta pump their systems, you gotta put it on record, you know, it, it becomes, at that time, it wasn't much different than this time, we're shorthanded. And, and to start following that through, uh, is, is an expense and it takes people to do that. So we've, uh, we said, when the DNR tells us, you have to do it and what they're gonna do for us, they, in twenty years, they, you were on, you're, I, you probably went on when we got, when we went through this, but, um, Bud Holson, that down in the southern part of this county even said, listen, it should be an option. And that's where we made it. Uh, Larry Hildebrandt at that time says, oh my, I don't know if we shouldn't really do that, you know? That, you know, you're, you're grinding with the DNR, well, I've grown with the DNR a lot of times, they don't always. They don't always do their job, and that's it in a nutshell. We've got farms out there that ain't, uh, uh. Correspondence and, and they don't want, they don't wanna touch it. Well, no, no, it's your job, you know, about quarter. Thank you there, Dick. Well, there's a service, eh? Anyway, we decided about a year later, Larry came to me and he said, you know, that was a good thing we did that. Took, because now you don't need a soil survey, you know. And I says, why? He says, cuz people are coming in and saying, can I put in a bigger tank? Can I go to a mound in five years or ten years? Can I do those things? So he said, it was such a positive thing. Now they have the choice. Where before they were being forced to do it, you know, our system today, we're being forced to do so many things. And my thoughts are is, you know, if you wanna change it, better wait a year and a half and get me off of this committee. Because, you know, I still feel that same way. We are on a clay plane and ninety percent of. Your systems are holding tanks because the rule is, it's a last resort. But ninety percent of them is the only resort. So, a- and that's my rationale on it. If I just wanna change that and go to the Wisconsin Fund. Well, there's another can of worms. I, I don't know, we don't need no more can of worms. So that's my thought on it, you know, if. Matt is pushed, has pushed real hard. To, to get this Wisconsin Fund in and to get, uh, our, all our septic, uh, on, on record, you know.
Matt, who are you talking?
Matt McKinsey. You know, and he's been DNR forever, and this is part of his issue. And he's been here about every six months to a year, he'll come to this committee and say, we really need to. Get on the Wisconsin Fund. We really need to start doing this in Ashland County. Well. We got the best water in the world. Yeah, we wanna keep it that way. But should we be charging people and, and that, uh, for no reason?
Don't some of the municipalities have their own rules? Cuz on the island, uh, I mean, we've got, we've got our own sanitary district. And they have to get permitted and thi- this is different than.
No, we don't have a sanitary district out there. We just have, uh, holding tanks and we're, everybody's supposed to pump them.
But we have a sanitary district on the island.
Well, yeah, the island's got a sanitary district. Meringo, I think, has got a sanitary.
Well, here's.
London does, the town of Jacobs has a sanitary district. Those chairman for a while and we have our own sanitary district.
Yeah, some do. I know, I know some do have their own district and, uh, the island has a sanitary. Anything, anybody who builds outside of that.
Rural person.
Right, then it comes back to us.
Yep, yep.
So, so we, we do take care of all the sanitary permits outside of the sanitary district. Right, same thing with any of like Town of Jacobs or any of these other. Uh, Meringo has a private mound system put in by a private fellow there who owned the. The gas station and the mobile homes. His system is on the west side of the highway and it's completely private, so, um. They don't have a sanitary system there besides the private mound system. So we still have, like anybody in Meringo on the east side of the highway, if they're gonna redo their system, it would come through us.
Okay, and we just wanna talk about having a waiver? That's the main thing we're talking about?
Well, I guess my main concern here was if we want to require a soil test or a waiver before we give a sanitary permit. Just so the person is.
That's not.
The homeowner is educated. Right now, it's not required unless they're gonna put in a treatment system. So if you're gonna put in a mound. You have to get a soil test to know what size mound you're gonna put in.
But if you're gonna put in a holding system, you don't have to have anything.
You don't need a thing if you're putting in a holding tank. And, and that's just fine, because like George said, probably ninety percent of the people have holding tanks anyway, but. What it comes down to is. The, the areas that can put a mound in, they still, they just think they can't because everybody else can't. But until they have a soil test, they don't know that. The, the code right now requires six inches of suitable soil. So if you find a, a higher piece of ground, even if it's clay. If it's got six inches with no seasonal saturation and it, it's, you can put a mound on that. And probably what, what hurts this, the homeowners is. They may do this, they just grab the, um, the holding tank, cuz it's the cheapest, easiest way to, to get going. And then they go to sell and the next person that comes is stuck with the holding tank and they don't know. They don't know anything about holding tanks. They came from the cities and they're all upset because they don't. They have to pump this tank now. And we do, um, I don't know if George knows, we are on that carmody system. Which, uh, it's, uh, I believe, Dan, did you say we pay like eight dollars per person? So that's, that's up and running, so I don't know why we wouldn't get state funded money now. We're on that system that, uh, we can go on and check to see how many holding tanks are out there and when they last been pumped. Because it's all recorded by the pumpers.
Well, when we get audited, uh, the state comes out and says, we have to have, I think, seventy-five percent in compliance. Seventy-five percent, and the ones they go out and check are always, we're always in compliance. Seventy-five percent isn't a hundred percent. So when the DNR, um, in, in the state comes out and actually, uh. Uh, what do you, what do you wanna say, uh, sidestep some of this stuff? Getting back to your thoughts there, you know, when somebody puts in a new house, a mound system costs between fifteen and twenty-five thousand bucks. And this was another thing, you know, back when nobody had money. Now it seems like everybody's got money, cuz they're. Building houses and whatever, you're not, you know. And, uh. That was one of the issues that we had, you know, because. They would, they would have to put in a mound system or a conventional system according to the state laws. Now they do not have to, they can put in a holding tank. And, um, that was one of another, one of those things, like we said, well, let's just see what the DNR does. We'll, we'll see what they do with the Hudson Bay Dam. Well, you know, uh. We were told a year and a half ago that we have to get it done by January first, twenty twenty-one, or we're gonna start getting fines. That hasn't happened. So, so any, you know, and, and I'll go back to. Fifteen years ago in the state, five years ago, the state came in and they wanted to us to. Put our committees or departments together. And, and they came out and they says, well, this is how you cut, uh, you know, department fees and everything else. Well, some of the counties went and did it right away, and most of us counties said, no way. We're not gonna do it unless we absolutely have to, you know. They, they're suggesting it with a do it or else attitude and they'd never follow up on it. You know, and, and as we change governors, if you've been into this long enough, like a lot of us have been. When a governor changes, the whole world changes. The whole state changes, like it or not, that's what happens. New rules come out, new monies come out, they go in different pots, you know. And we gotta deal with that. That's why we have an administrator. To deal with that kinda stuff, cuz it, it comes down every two years when you have a new con- congress assembly. Everything changes and you gotta have people, that's why they don't come so hard on us, is to say, oh, you have to or not, because they don't know themselves. That's the problem. I sat on a state land and water board for three years. I'll tell you what. There's just a lot of gibberish. Sometimes you wonder if they really care at all. Because we're the people on the, on the ground and you suggest this to the state, they go, oh, that's a good idea. It never goes to.
So is this something we can just, like, when you get a building permit, we give them the options? You can either, you know.
Well, it was always, we had to do what, uh, uh, if, like in the south end of the county, we have more sands. More, uh, and we have sand pockets. Well, people that qualified there had to put in a mound. We went with, you know, because, but those ninety percent that. Didn't have to go with mound, still had to get the soil survey. You had to get it. If you're gonna get a building permit, you gotta get a sanitation permit and a soil survey. Those were the two things you had to do before you even started to look at what kinda house.
Wait, when, what year was this that you had to do?
Oh gosh, the, the Wisconsin Fund went in twenty some years.
So then that must've got pulled back off, because now it's not required to get a soil test.
It was before, twenty years ago, you had to have a soil test. And, and that's why, like I said, I'm, I do the grave digging at St. Anne's and that, and it's all red clay and I said. Why do I gotta spend thousand dollars to get a soil survey? When it's gonna be a holding tank, and it is a holding tank. And so the committee just said, huh, heck with it. Uh, it should be an option in Ashland County, cuz we're on a clay plane. You know, now you get down into the southern end of the county and Price County, and then there's a lot of sand pockets. The glacier didn't, uh, spend as much clay in that area. So we went that way twenty years ago and, you know, Bayfield County. I hear, you know, and this is the problem we have. You hear so many things from so many different people all the time. I've heard from Bayfield County that they would wish they wouldn't have went with the Wisconsin Fund. Cuz now they gotta have two, three people taking care of that program. Is the program bad? No. I, I don't have an issue with, uh. You know, tracking our sewage and everything, you know, uh. And, and like I said, when people want to, like I said, Matt McKinsey will come to us every year. And say, hey, we need to get on that. We really need to get on that. And everybody listens to him and say, the DNR can do it. Why don't you do it? And they don't want monkey with it. They wanna send it to us people, you know.
Are you talking something different than the carmody? Cuz we are on the carmody tracking system right now.
Well, yeah, we're on a tracking system, but we're, they don't have to. See, in Bayfield County, if you have a. Septic system, you have to, uh, pump it every three years. If you have a holding tank, you gotta pump it every six months. Or according to how many people. I've got a kid that's got a three thousand gallon tank. He pumps it, yeah. You know, I don't know if it's on a, uh, if, uh, number two septic, uh, puts that on the, on the computer. But I know when my son-in-law and my daughter had the number two septic, you know, in Bayfield County. It, it was, everybody could track that. It had to go on the computer. Ours doesn't do that.
No, it is.
So whoever pumps does, but whoever doesn't pump, don't.
Yeah, so right now we can go on that carmody and we can, we can see who pumps and who doesn't. Because the pumper by law has to record every time.
Correct, yeah, correct.
So, so we do have a record of it right now.
How would that, how, just a question, how would that work for like my mother who's got a pumping system? And she's only there, she goes to Texas for five months out of the year. She has to pump it?
So yes, there's, in, in Bayfield County who requires, like George, I believe their requirement is every three months it has to be pumped. If you're a seasonal person, you can get a permit from them.
Okay, I just wondered.
Yeah, then it's no problem. So far in Ashland County, the way I understand, we don't have a three month period or six month period. What we do have is a state statute that says every three years, your tank has to be, your system has to be maintained. And, um, it has to show. If it's, how, how it's worded, if you have more than thirty percent, I believe it is. Of the sewage, the, the sludge on top of the tank, floating on the top. If it's more than thirty percent, one-third, you have to get the tank pumped. Normal operations, a lot of times that's not the case. They, they don't get over thirty percent, but some do. But either way, that's, the code is right now for state is every three years. And we don't have anything different than I know of in our county to bring it sooner like Bayfield County does. But we can track the, when they get pumped, cuz it's all on carmody.
Yep. Okay, any other discussion? Okay, number thirteen, other business? Any other business? Okay. That should be on, that should be on seventeen, correct? Right, this is, we're on thirteen, correct?
Yep.
Yeah, okay. Any, was there any other business anybody had here?
You know, before we leave that last one, do you want me to, um, should we just leave this for now until next? Whenever our next meeting, or are we just not worried about it as of now for?
I'm not worried about changing it.
Okay, we're just gonna leave it as it is?
Yep.
They don't wanna argue with me.
Yeah.
No, no. Okay, land description, that's item number fourteen, public comments. Any public comments on land? Any public comments? Okay, number fifteen, discussion actions, property subject to tax deed.
Okay. So I guess I'll just introduce myself too for the new, um, committee members. I'm Jennifer Solberg. I'm the. Real property lister for Ashland County, uh, and part of my, uh, the land description office, we also do the. Delinquent tax process, so foreclosing on properties where their delinquent tax is over four years, sending notice and doing that whole process. Uh, so the list that I have, the tax deed notice served list. Is just a list that, that my office prepares that has, um, the different properties that we have sent. Um, the delinquent tax notice to. It lists all the parcel numbers, owner names, with how much they owe on those years that are subject to tax deed. Um, whether or not there are improvements or an occupant on the property. Um, some of the, uh, the date served and then what our foreclosure date would be, just kinda some info for us. Um, and then also payment plan information and any extra notes that we have. So typically, I get this out ahead of time to go with the packet, so you have some time to look it over, um, before the meeting, um. I don't really go through it line by line, um, just cuz it would, would take a lot of time. So.
Could I have a question then?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, I'm looking at your notes here. What, what do we do with the ones that say no payment plan at this time?
Yep, so, uh, my office is still working on getting a payment plan from this person, um. Some of these people, because we just, um, created a new payment plan policy, so we're still in the works of getting everyone signed up on that. Um, because some people had payment plans before that time, and so we're just needing them to sign the new form.
Could we put payment plan pending or something on that, just so we know that? You, you know, you're working on it.
Yeah.
Cuz right now this tells, you know, I'm just looking at it and I don't think anything's being done.
Okay.
But if you put pending, then that would help us.
Okay. Yep, yeah, there's. Yep.
So all of them are, you're working on every single one. Okay, that's.
Yep.
That'd be good. I just didn't know that.
Okay, yep, yeah, and I can, I can note that they're, that they're pending, if that's easier. Yep, absolutely. Okay. Um, yeah, so at this time, um, are there any questions about anyone? Um, about this list, about anyone on it?
Yeah, I guess I have another one then.
Yeah.
It says payment pan is, plan is not approved and they didn't sign the, so then what do we do then? You know, on the first page. Items six and seven, just an example. I'm just wondering. I'm just wondering like these, it says payment span is not approved. She didn't sign it, so then what do we do?
Yep, so then we're just, um, those are the ones, like I said, that we're just working on getting those payment plans. Signed by these people. We've prob- um, a lot of these. Um, they probably made a payment plan verbally with us in the past, but now with our new policy, we're getting them, we're sending them the actual sheet to sign. Their official payment plan document, so those.
Is there a timeframe that we hold to then? If they don't get to by a certain date, then we do something or?
Yep, yeah, so if they don't sign a payment plan, um, you can see the dates kind of in the middle. That bottom date, so for example, for this Wendy Oldby property. If there's no payment plan or anything or, or paid in full, done by this, that September sixteenth date. That would be the date we could foreclose on.
I don't see that September sixteenth date.
Oh, sorry, I have a newer version of the.
Oh, okay, okay.
We had filled in here, um, the dates.
Oh, okay, I was just looking, okay, all right.
Sorry about that.
Nope.
Any other questions?
Well, I have a comment for our new uh people. The reason we went to this is. Some of these people end up with four and five years of back taxes. And it really gives Jennifer a hard time to continue to deal with them. We send them letters and we send them letters and then when you wanna, uh, you should be foreclosing on them. They, they come in and they say, well, I had this and this, you know. This pretty much sets it in place after so many uh months. If, if they don't make a payment plan, we can actually foreclose on them. Then they have to either go get a loan and pay up.
Yeah.
Because um uh it gets, it gets, it gets, some of these numbers, when you see these twenty, thirty thousand dollar back tax numbers. I mean, that's the price of a house.
Oh, I agree.
And we're, and we get them quite often. So um now if we had somebody on the island that would go and collect this money. Well, you probably do collect it, you just don't turn it in. That's okay too.
I agree a hundred percent that it's gotta be a pain enough, you know, I just was wondering on a couple of things I heard.
Yeah.
You know, it's still our decision if we foreclose or not, so we still, that's gotta come through this committee.
Yeah.
Dick, can you turn your microphone on, please?
Sorry, I had it on. I'm familiar with the situation that Tom and Stacy are in, Tom Clavett. His problem started a few years ago when his wife came down with MS. She was a full-time worker, bringing in good money and she had, all of a sudden you went to no income or income from one person. That's when the taxes started going to hell. Um, I don't know that it's our job to. Penalize him for that situation that he's in. Uh, Jennifer, I'm gonna ask you now, he was paying five hundred dollars a month, right?
Um, yeah, it was either five hundred or five seventy-five.
According to your paperwork, it says five. I'm not sure. Would you that?
Yeah, this is his, yeah, so his, so he signed a new, yeah, he signed a new agreement to do six hundred dollars, but previously it was five hundred.
It was five hundred?
Five, five hundred or five hundred seventy-five.
That's what he was. I think that's what he was uh paying.
Yes.
I, I, yeah, okay. Well, according to the paperwork, I got it. I thought it was, I thought it was five hundred. Um, my question is, for this board. The, the time period. That um it would take to pay that up at the current payments, what he's been paying. And from what I understand, he's been paying regularly. Uh, he's not behind on payments. Um, what I'm asking this board to consider. When he upped the ante on this thing, it was primarily because he thought it was gonna be foreclosed upon. It wasn't something that he could afford. From what I understand, by, by talking to him, um, this leaves absolutely no money left at the end of the month if you pay all your bills and this. Now, if you ever been in that position, it's not a good position to be in. Uh, what I'm, what I'm asking is that it, it's not a big deal money-wise. It's not a big wheel time-wise as far as how much time it's gonna take, more to pay it back. I, I wish we could just consider leaving the payment plan where it was before this was raised. And kind of give them a break on that. I, I don't think that we're in the business of, of foreclosing on people, making life tougher. I think that's not our job. So I, I would appreciate it if you had considered leaving the payment plan where it was, as long as he's current and making payments every month. There was absolutely no reason to raise it. So please take that into consideration. Thank you.
Was the reason, did we ask to raise it or did he ask to raise it? I was on the board, so I just question.
Uh, at the last meeting, two months ago, we had asked him to raise his payment amount.
Okay, so we asked him.
Yeah.
Okay. Yep.
Yeah, um, when we put this thing together, I was hoping we could go with a grandfather clause and we did not. That means uh if people were paying and they were catching up, here's the problem we have. In our county, we, we charge eighteen percent uh penalty and interest. So on a thousand bucks, that's a hundred and eighty dollars a year. That, that's very high. That was put in back in the eighties after the, now we're getting politics again. But when the Carter administration was in, we paid as much as fifteen to eighteen percent uh interest. And so a lot of the people weren't paying their taxes, so they were investing their money. The state says we have to charge twelve percent. We went to the eighteen percent because people weren't paying their taxes, so we're forcing the people to pay their taxes. We've tried to hit this a few times and bring it back and the county board says, huh, no, we're not gonna do that. Uh, two years ago, the committee put together to drop it back down to twelve percent. That was, that, that was like a burping church, you know, it was just, it wasn't gonna go, you know. So we, we put together kind of something that uh Jennifer can go on and, and, you know. It, it's got, this has got some substance in it. Before it was always, we'll wait a month, we'll wait a month, we'll come to the committee, we'll wait a month, you know. So can we, can we still say we're gonna give that person a chance? The one we're talking about owed fifteen, sixteen thousand a couple of years ago. And he's been paying a, a big sum of money. And, and so uh I, I think we're trying to be lenient and we're trying to give them every, we don't want to take these properties.
No.
You know, and, and, but then there's people who just let it linger on and on and, and they refuse to take on their responsibility. So this is where some of this has come from.
So we should be able to tell reasonably quick whether they are, have any incentive to pay, are gonna pay. Or just gonna be deadbeats and not pay at all. If they don't, you know what I mean? We should know within six, seven months if they're gonna pay, which we should try to help them people out for sure.
Well, I've been on this committee for thirty years, you know, and we try to be sentimental a little bit. But when people take advantage of it and, and you, you so often wonder what's going on. When you have a property, we sold it with that last fall, it was on the island. I mean, they had eighty thousand dollars against the property and it was worth, we sold it for two hundred and fifty. Why don't them people sell it and pay the tax off? You know, you wonder.
Yeah.
And they don't, they just, whatever happens, happens, but we sold it, you know. So uh these things are gonna come up and this is what this committee deals with. That's our duty.
Yep.
And when all fails, we give it to the administrator.
Yeah, and I, I just want to point out, I agree with Chair Pufall on this one. The per, the person here, he's consistently paying every month. He's consistently whittling down his bill. You know, to take his property doesn't really seem fair. You know, it's not like the person who just doesn't pay anything. Or says, I'm just gonna give you fifty dollars a month, which will never make a dent in the balance. This guy's actually pulling down his balance pretty fast and at five hundred dollars a month, he'd be done in about fifteen months. Which, you know, I know that's a little bit longer than the committee likes. But, you know, considering where he started from and the effort he's putting in, I think it's only fair that we, this committee gives him the opportunity to get back. If he doesn't commit, keep up with his commitment, then you can revisit taking property. But for now, he's keeping his commitment and, so I think that sends a message to everybody else too, as long as you're honest and.
Yeah.
You live up to your responsibilities and you work with the county and paying your debt back, that, you know, the county will work with you. And in this case, I think Chairman Pufall is absolutely correct.
I agree a hundred percent with both of you. That's, we're not here to penalize people and if they're trying, I'm a hundred percent for helping them do it.
Okay.
Need to vote on this or?
Uh, yes, can we have a vote, please? Um, but can we wait, Mrs. Stark stepped out of the room for a second?
Okay. Oh, yep, Dick.
And I, I'd like to make another recommendation to this board too, that George, you talked about the, the uh. Rate that you're charging now, eighteen percent or whatever it is. I, I'd like to see a proposal from this committee to the full board about reducing that again. To some people, that's the difference in getting caught up and not getting caught up. And I think if we got it down to ten, twelve or percent or whatever, it would get everybody that owes us money a break. You know, there, there's situations that, that occur with, with everybody that's on this list. We don't know all of them.
Right.
And I, I think uh it makes life a hell of a lot smoother for a lot of people if that interest rate was lower.
Right, I would agree to that because if they're having trouble paying now. Raising the interest rate gives them more trouble to pay. You know what I mean? And we're not in the business of making money, like, okay, that's why.
Uh, I, 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 I like Dick's thoughts. He was on the board, he chaired this one, we brought this to the board the last time. And um that six percent was about fifty, sixty thousand dollars. And the administrator at that time said, oh, you show me where we're gonna make this up. Well. The, the rationale is, is these people are already having problems. You know, and, and you're gonna, you're gonna get all your money from the people who are having problems to pay all your bills that people are making a good wage. You know, and, and this is, four of the five committee members supported dropping it back down to the state. The state says, right, state says we have to charge.
Yeah, I can double check that.
One percent per month, you know, and uh, you know, that was it and we, and we got beat up pretty bad. So if this committee would like to try that again, and, and the reason. Well, I can go on forever and everybody knows that, I've been here too long. The, 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 the issue there is, is we just, we just passed the budget last fall. And we put a million dollars into a debt levy. Now, it was a million, right? Or it was a million, two million?
Well, like one point eight or that.
Yeah, and if, and when you get into the. Works of county and, and, and how we handle budget, twice we put out a. We, we wanted the people to give us a million dollars that we could tax.
Right, or that, right.
And we've, we've, we've tried so many different things, you know, well, can we get another half a percent of um. You know, general tax or, or uh. Well, the state says if we raise it a half a percent, then we've got to take it off of the tax that you're off, yes, they. Well, one thing about. This debt levy is we get to tax the Walmarts. We get to tax the, the super ones. We, we get to tax the rich. And when people turned it down, the, the million dollars. We went back and taxed them to two million and we can do that legally. So, so you know, what, what they stopped us from doing, and it would have cost less because when you have a debt levy, you gotta pay interest. So what the people just, you know, and the board just said, heck, yeah, you know, if people don't want to give us a million, we'll just take two. The island loves it. I mean, the poor island, I don't, there, it's not a poor place to live. But twenty-three percent of our entire levy comes off the island. That's humongous. We gotta be bending over backwards for these people and yet we don't. You know, and, and, and Mike will, will tell you that. It's always nice to see him back on the board.
Okay, do we need to act on that then or just?
Um, yeah, so I would ask for a motion to approve the payment plan for Tom Clavett at the amount he was paying previously.
Which, do you know offhand, was it five hundred? I hope, I mean.
I can check if, yeah, if we.
Just so we have the motion correct.
Right.
I will make that a motion. I, I will make that a motion.
I just waiting for the final amount and then I'll gladly second.
Well, what she's asking for is a motion to, to override the program, which the program says. She has the ability to deal with the people on, on what they, and she made a, a commit or a. She, she made an offer and he said it's too high in this committee right now. I just made a motion to go back to what he was paying to be good enough. It's gonna take him still a year and a half to two years to pay. And what we're trying to get the people to either get it paid up within a year. If you look on these, you're gonna see some of them are all the way back to six, two thousand sixteen, two thousand eighteen. And that's just unacceptable. And that's why we're giving her that option to go ahead and tell these people, hey, you know, eight years is too long. We have a thirty months, uh, you, you can be back on your taxes for thirty months. Then we basically go and collect it one way or the other.
Yeah.
It'd be just as slow.
So my motion is, is that we go back to the, what he was paying before.
Yep, and I'm just pulling that number up now so we can have that option. Our site, our website's just kind of slow.
That's what he was paying, wasn't it? Six hundred or?
No.
No, no, that's, that's, that's a new number.
Yeah. I'm looking up the number right now.
I'm pretty sure it's that. Yeah, that's great.
Dick? Well, I'll second the motion.
He had previously been paying five seventy-five.
So that was only a twenty-five dollar difference, which twenty-five is twenty-five, I understand, but I think we should do five.
Yeah, and he would still have his, he would still have it all paid off in probably just twelve months even.
Okay. Yeah, Dan, what was your recommendation?
My recommend, oh, sorry.
My recommendation is that the committee allow this gentleman to pay what he's always been paying. On time, consistent, and allow him to pay off his bill. I mean, I don't think there's a need to foreclose on him. I think he's trying his best and I, and we should, and he's making progress. He's taking real bites out of the, the balance.
And, and for what it's worth, we weren't at like an imminent, like we were going to foreclose the next day. This is just getting him established ahead of time so that we don't have to visit that conversation in three months.
Yeah, yeah, so I, I would say let him continue making payments and then if he stops paying for some reason, then it can come back to the committee. But I don't think he's going to and I think we should work with him as much as possible.
Uh, I, I'm glad that Jenny brought that up. This was something that we put in to say, let's get started somewhere. And, and I think everybody kind of looked at it as to say, hey, tomorrow we're gonna go full bore and we're gonna start foreclosing. And that was never the, the reason for doing it. And that was never the, the reason for doing it. If it takes time, fine, let's give her, you know, just, this program will work. I, I think it'll work down the road.
Yeah. So we should probably finish that motion. There was a motion in a second, yep.
I seconded George's motion to put it back to five seventy-five a month.
Okay, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Okay.
Thank you.
Yep. Sixteen, discussion action, payment plan review, did we just do that?
Yeah, we, we just did that.
Seventeen, next meeting date.
We're not, we're not looking at a land sale this spring or summer, are we?
Um, no, we don't really have enough properties or we don't really have a need to do a land sale.
Yeah, we do, but nobody ever bids on them.
No, we cleaned house last year pretty well. We did, so I have no need for a land sale within the next couple of months.
Yeah.
Okay, and I don't really need one. I mean, I could skip a month if we needed, if you guys wanted to skip a month, that's fine.
We have to bring budgets to committees by July fifteenth, I believe it is, so.
Sure, so we should have a meeting before July fifteenth then?
Yeah, yep.
The twelfth, is the twelfth, Mark?
All right, just so everybody knows, I won't be here then. But you don't need me really.
July twelfth at nine, work for everybody?
Yep.
Okay. Because it goes ding, ding, ding. Oh, wow. Okay, land records, other business?
Hi, I'm Brittany Goodus-Swießbecker. I wanted to come to this meeting and just introduce myself to everybody. There's some new faces today. So normally I work remotely and I usually attend these meetings remotely. But I just wanted to see your faces, let you see my face. So I do the GIS work, so I work with almost all of the departments. A lot of the mapping stuff, GIS is geographic information systems. So really it's, it's mapping and all the data management that is behind the scenes on that. So you know, the road names, the, you know, the lake names, everything like that, I'm kind of managing. Also, I am chair of the Land Information Council. That funds the GIS department. We get about a hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars annually in three grants that I manage. And those are kind of rolling grants. So normally I'm managing five to seven grants a year. And that helps with projects like getting new imagery for the website so people can see the, their parcels a little better. And we do stuff with the Registered Deeds Office so you can access paper copies online. Those, those kinds of things are part of the Land Records Department. So, yeah, just want to introduce myself.
Are you working with the island on the fire numbers?
Yes, we are, yeah. That's a big, readdressing is gonna be a big project over there.
We use that, we always look at that GIS website. We're, the wife and I, who owns that, who owns that, we're always on that.
Right, awesome. Uh, parcels are updated about weekly. And then addresses, it's kind of maybe a monthly. And the rest of the stuff is about every six months or so. No, the, the photos, the imagery of like the trees and everything, that is, right now, we're on a five-year schedule. Those, those are hefty projects, about a hundred and thirty thousand dollars to get those flown. So we only do those every five years. So, but the rest of the data on top of those, we update more regularly.
All right, any other business? Okay, motion to adjourn.
I made that motion.
Oh.
I'll, I'll say it, George.
And your turn then.
Okay.
Okay. Yeah, I was town chairman down there, sorry man, meetings down there, so this takes me a little while.